of the moderator planning commission. It is four o'clock and I'd like to open the meeting. Uh, first item is consent and that is the.
Oh, hello.
I'm sorry, we asked you, boy, I get it from all barrels. Uh, let's have a roll call on who's attending.
Sure thing. First, we have you Chair Brassfield.
Present.
And Vice Chair Freeman.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa. Right. Oh, you're muted. You're here.
He is.
Thank you. Commissioner Milich.
Here.
And Commissioner Reed.
Present.
Wonderful. Got everyone here.
Thank you. And we probably have some staff members as well. If we can, let's go into the consent item as one item and that is our minutes. Any comments?
So I said one, one quick correction on uh, item three page. Uh, I don't know, page two, I guess. It says on a motion by Commissioner Hanson, it should be Commissioner Reed. That was the only change. So otherwise, it's all fixed. Otherwise, it's all crap. But I move to um, approve as suggested and amended.
Second.
We have two seconds. Want to try that again? Mike, are you seconding it?
No, Sandy's seconding it.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor by roll call?
First, we have Chair Brassfield.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Milich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Thank you. So sorry about my typo there.
So it's all I's, so I, there would be no no's. We got six I's. Uh, next item is item number. This is three. Consider the adoption of mitigated negative declaration basically for fuel reduction. Uh, I'd like to open up before we go any further to public comment on anything not on the agenda.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. I'm going to go ahead and just read off some brief announcements related to public comment and our new process using Zoom Gov. So just a friendly reminder, we do encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov, which is a secure service for use by government agencies. Joining on Zoom is preferred because you're connected live to the meeting. Then this meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey where there's an approximately 10 second delay. And on Comcast Channel 25, which has up to a 90 second delay. If you plan to make a public comment, join the meeting using Zoom on the app or by telephone, making sure you join in time to accommodate these delays. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer or phone, use the link or phone number on the agenda, which is located at isearchmonterey.org. And since the meeting has already begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four. Or six six nine two five four five two five two. And then enter the webinar ID, which is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. And this number should also be on the bottom of your screen if you're watching the meeting. To make a public comment, raise your hand by using Zoom, or if you're connected by telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute yourself when called upon. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. And we ask that the public commenters turn off their TV or computer speakers, or simply go into another room while connected on the phone. Um, since background noise could interfere with the broadcast and how we receive your comment. I will call on each public speaker in order of hands raised. And the chair has designated a three minute time limit for today's meeting with a countdown that'll be shown on the screen. Of course, please stay within your time limit and we look forward to receiving your public comments. And I'm just going to check out, we do have a few attendees. Uh, so just a reminder to our attendees, oh, it does look like we have one person raising their hand. So I'm going to go ahead and allow them to share that public comment. And it looks like Marta. I just allowed you to speak. If you could please unmute yourself to share your comment.
Is this the public comment? Is this the applicable time for public comment?
So it's for the public comment for items not on today's agenda.
Yes. Okay, I have a public comment not on today's agenda. Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, um, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Marta Craftcheck and I'm a lifelong resident of Monterey. I sent in the letter today to be added to the record of this meeting regarding the impacts of MPUSD project at Monterey High School. Recently, Monterey Peninsula Unified School District released a draft EIR for a proposed Monterey High Sports Complex. That includes stadium lights, additional bleachers, and a new public address system. The draft EIR states very clearly that the impacts on our neighborhood would be significant. And would exceed the standard set by the City of Monterey's general plan. The general plan policies show that the City of Monterey understands the importance of scenic roadways and night sky visibility. Sky glow would occur from stadium lights, especially when the marine layer is present. This would be visible from Pacific Street, a scenic roadway, and well beyond, producing sky glow over our historic civic center. The stadium would have four light poles 70 feet tall. Could you, as the planning commission, request that balloons be placed at that 70 foot height? So the city and neighbors can get an idea of the permanent visual impacts of these light poles. The stadium project would also generate significant increased noise. MPUSD's own noise experts have stated that the residences nearby would be exposed to noise levels that are substantially louder than existing conditions. And would exceed city noise standards. Parking is at a premium in our neighborhoods. The draft EIR claims that there is sufficient parking on school property for any anticipated crowd. As local residents will tell you, for big events, attendees search for parking in the neighborhood. As a consequence, cars are often parked illegally on private property, blocking driveways and in unsafe locations along our narrow dark streets. The new project would mean total stadium seating for 1,900 attendees, which would greatly exceed available parking in lots. It would increase risks for walkers and attendees and could block emergency vehicles. Rich Deal, a former Monterey traffic engineer, has acknowledged that this project would cause parking problems. Due to the California Civic Center Act, non-school groups could use these facilities and increase the number of nighttime events. MPUSD is already advertising rental of this Monterey High Sports Complex with nighttime lights. The City of Monterey helped the Casanova Oak Knoll push back against a detrimental project proposed by the airport district. I and my neighbors ask you to help our R1 neighborhood now. Show residents that you, members of our city government, respect the Monterey General Plan and City Code. Compliance should be mandatory and expected from all developers, including MPUSD. There should be no preference or deference to other agencies with regard to the city's enforcement of the general plan or city code. Please take the time to study the impacts of this project and help us protect our neighborhoods. Comments on the draft EIR are due on January 12th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, it looks like I don't have any additional public comment for items not related to the agenda.
Okay. Next item.
Oh, and it looks like someone did just raise their hand. Would it be okay to allow them to share their comment?
Go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Chair. And Tony, I just went ahead and allowed you to speak if you'd like to share your public comments items not on the agenda for today.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, members of the planning commission. Uh, my name is Tony Toller and I live here in Monterey. I hope everyone is well and most importantly, staying safe. Um, I'm commenting on the, on the same thing. MPUSD recently released a draft EIR on the Monterey High High School Stadium. Uh, I'm not here to comment on the EIR, but asked you to ensure that any changes at Monterey High are considered. With the city's general plan, that they preserve the historic integrity of what exists, contribute to the value of our, of our community, and most importantly, keep us safe. MPUSD is planning on spending well in excess of $10 million on a project that has the potential to have a huge impact on money aspects of our city. While I understand that MPUSD is not a normal planning commission customer, their projects can have an outsized impact on our city. This is one of those times. This project would go against the grain of sound city planning in many areas, including noise and light pollution, lack of appropriate parking, insufficient entry egress, and inadequate emergency vehicle access. For example, Monterey Municipal Code specifies that the maximum decibel noise level for residential and public and semi-public spaces is 60 decibels. Most stadiums produce anywhere from 80 to 130 decibels of noise. The proposed 70 foot lights would bleed not light into many local neighborhoods. And be further exacerbated when it's foggy, producing significant light sky, uh, sky glow. Additionally, our local scenic corridor, Pacific Street, would be directly impacted when those lights are on. Parking for events held at the existing stadium have historically resulted in overflow, often illegal parking. Uh, I'm sorry, neighborhood street parking posing significant safety issues for pedestrians and emergency vehicles. This project proposes using Logan Lane as a major entry and exit corridor. At some places, that street is only 10 and a half feet wide. How is a fire truck or ambulance going to get through if there is traffic or someone illegally parked? Take a hard look at access or lack thereof for differently abled folks. Does this project meet current ADA regulations? Uh, what are the city's obligations and potential liabilities for safety and all person access compliance? Also, take a look at how this project will impact and disturb the historic, the historic stone bleachers and district office building, which was built in the 20s. Additionally, the project opens the door to create a sports complex that by law would make Monterey High's facilities available for year round use by anyone wanting to rent it. In fact, as was noted by the previous speaker, the district is already advertising the space as being lighted and available for rent. I encourage all of you to read the draft EIR and take a long look at how Monterey High is being developed. Do those changes reflect your respect for the natural beauty of our city and the real needs of our students and educators? Our citizens, children, and teachers deserve city government that stands up for them. There is so much opportunity here. Tell MPUSD to change their priorities and focus on students' health and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait.
And let me just double check our public comment here. Uh, it doesn't appear that we have anyone else raising their hand at this time.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
It's a, I understand we have a staffer that will give us a presentation on the fuel reduction project.
Yes, that is me. Uh, my name is Kristi Saffo. I'm Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. Start my presentation here. Okay, so the Green Belt Fuel Reduction Plan is being managed by urban forester Justin Proudie. A environmental document, a mitigated negative declaration, has been prepared for the project. Staff is recommending adoption of a mitigated negative declaration. And the city has identified seven areas within the city's green belt system where fire hazards are high due to high fuel loads. Wildfire and these green belts could result in substantial impacts to natural resources and substantial health, safety, welfare impacts to built and human environment adjacent to these areas. There are seven green belts that have been identified for the need for this fuel reduction. Skyline Forest, Veterans Park, Monte Vista, Carmelo Street, Don Davy, Jocelyn Canyon, and Fisherman Flats. So the objective of the Green Belt Fuel Reduction Project is to reduce the risk of wildfire in the plant area for fuel reduction actions undertaken by the city. Uh, specific goals include reduce the fire hazard within the city's green belt system to an acceptable level of risk. Maintain and enhance ecological values for plant and wildlife habitat while achieving fire reduction goals. Preserve aesthetic landscape values for neighboring residents and visitors. And improve watershed conditions by protecting it from the adverse conditions of wildland fire on soil and water quality. Uh, there are actions to be implemented to reduce these fire hazards and I'll list what they include. And so this is the project description. Uh, thinning of vegetation to reduce biomass. Removal of trees focusing primarily on dead and dying trees. Um, live tree removal where needed, the root systems will be left intact to maintain slope stability. Um, trees or large tree form shrubs to be trimmed and pruned. Removal of dead and dying plants to reduce low fuel moisture biomass and highly flammable fire fuels. Removal of exotic and invasive plants to reduce presence of undesirable species and reduce overall biomass. Prescribed grazing utilizing goats and sheep to thin and remove vegetation in difficult to access areas. Treated fire fuel materials will be removed and disposed of in a landfill green waste composting program or chipped and used as mulch in the plant area. Staging areas for vehicles and equipment will be focused on existing roads and right of ways. Vehicle and equipment would be rubber tired, non-metal tracked vehicles to eliminate soil disturbance. And best management practices will be used to eliminate or to limit construction dust and emissions. So an initial study was prepared, potential environmental impacts were identified and mitigation measures to reduce those impacts. Under biological resources, special status plant and wildlife species, there are seven mitigation measures to reduce any potential impacts. So biological mitigation measure one is prior to all activities, including mobilization of equipment and clearing of vegetation. A qualified biologist shall survey the area. And those survey results and recommendations should be implemented before getting started to protect special status plant and wildlife species. Uh, mitigation measure bio two, fuel reduction actions shall adhere to avoidance recommendations. Um, in the City of Monterey Fuel Reduction Plan. So there are two pages of those recommendations. Mitigation measure three, the nesting bird survey should be conducted if tree removal occurs during nesting season, which is February 1st through August 31st. And if nesting activity is observed, tree and shrub removal should be delayed until the young have fledged and the nest is abandoned. And then also the biologist can recommend an appropriate buffer zone to ensure no indirect disturbance occurs. Uh, mitigation measure bio four is in the event that tree removal is required due to imminent threat or safety concerns along a road or right of way. Timing won't be restricted, but um, may involve coordination with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife at the discretion of a qualified biologist. Um, mitigation measure bio five, in the event of soil or ground disturbance, removal of tree or shrub stump or root systems. Uh, work is not to proceed unless authorized by a qualified biologist. Mitigation measure bio six requires environmental awareness training for fuel reduction personnel prior to start the project. Training will include identification and avoidance of resources. I'm under, um, there are potential impacts to sensitive natural communities and riparian habitats and protected wetlands. So mitigation measure bio seven would reduce that impact. And that includes creek, drainages, and wet meadows shall not be crossed with motorized vehicles. And refueling shall be restricted to within 50 feet of those um, streams or wetland riparian areas. Um, potential impacts to stream drainages, riparian and wetland areas, the same mitigation measure would reduce potential impacts to those. Um, the one I just read. And if there's any potential for paleontological resources, which is really unexpected. Um, work shall stop and the area should be marked with flagging. Um, there's potential impacts to, um, due to hazardous materials, there's going to be fuel. Um, from the equipment used on site. So there's a potential for a, a small amount of petroleum to be spilled. Uh, which could also impact water quality. So for both of these, mitigation measure bio seven would reduce those potential impacts. Uh, which is um, not crossing these wet areas with motorized vehicles and not fueling within 50 feet of them. So the initial study mitigated negative declaration was noticed and circulated for public review for the required 30 day period. From September 3rd to October 5th. Um, during which time all documents remain available. We received five comments. And those were responded to and are included in the final ISMND. If you have any questions on those. Uh, staff recommends approval of the adopted mitigated negative declaration. I'm available for questions and I believe Justin Proudie should be available online if you have to help me answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, this seems like a common sense thing to do, uh, given the recent drought and the proliferation of trees that are old and aging and dying. Is there a coordinated effort between the City of Monterey and the cities of Pacific Grove and Carmel, which have all the same types of flora and fauna?
That's a good question for either Kim or Justin Proudie.
So I'll share what I'm aware of. Uh, my name is Kim Cole, Community Development Director. Um, the fire departments have been meeting and discussing various measures that are needed. I don't know whether they've been discussing a comprehensive green belt reduction between the cities, though. They have been discussing. Uh, emergency evacuation routes. Uh, we could ask the fire chief for an update on that. And we could report back to the planning commission, but um, I know they've been having regional working meetings and Justin Proudie. Who should be on the telephone, um, would have more information possibly.
Okay.
Um, I have a question. This seems like, I'm presuming this is, this is the, this, this negative, uh, mitigated negative deck. Is as a result of the NIP projects that have the uh, fuel reduction on them. And it seems like over the last two to three years, we've been doing this. This has been a, a process that you, you submit a. Uh, or go out for this, we have this hearing and we have this, this, this thing every year. Is there any way to set this up so that it is multi-year? Or is it restricted because we only have the funding each and every year there is, I mean, it, it's a new project and so therefore if this is a new project, we actually have to do this each and every year. I'm just curious if we can make this longer so we've done it, so we don't have to do this every year. That's all.
I'll just share with you, that's what the purpose of this environmental document is, is to have a multi-year clearance for the environmental and have guidelines for our. Um, park staff. Uh, what you see every year is a consistency determination of the NIP and CIP with city plans. And that's required as part of the, the city's approval of its budget. And as in the founding documents of our planning commission as well as state law. So what you look at every year is the consistency with the general plan and area plans. And then this is following up with the environmental document.
I'm pretty sure over the last two years, we've done it at least twice, where we've done the, the, the environmental impact study.
Kristi, was there a previous forest reduction plan that got updated? I think that was part of the genesis of this project.
There was, and there was an environmental document. I don't recall the year.
Hey, everybody. This is Justin. I was just having trouble unmuting myself before, if you guys need me for anything further. Um, but we, uh, we do, we are working in region. Our fire defense plans, uh, we are currently working at developing a fire defense plan that's kind of modeled off of what Cal Fire has done for Pebble Beach. And the Cypress Fire Protection District.
Thank you, Justin.
Kristi, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, so the, um, I realize this, uh, this whole project is really related to sort of protection of urban. Areas of the city from fire, but what about the Old Capital Site? How does that fit in to this kind of a, um, project?
Sure. And Commissioner Dawson did comment on that and um, he was one of the commenters of the plan. Um, so that, um, this plan was written before we um, acquired the Old Capital Site. And so we will be doing fuel reduction measures on that site and in a different way, but it will get incorporated into the next round of the fuel reduction plan.
I see. And, and you know, in, in light of, of what um, Hansson just mentioned, there's no way to sort of. Put it in to avoid having to do another EIR?
Not in this round.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Any other comments? Then I will open it up to public comment.
Thank you, Chair. So let me just take a quick look and just do a friendly reminder about our public comment and how to go ahead and call in. Uh, I just wanted to do a friendly reminder that you could join via Zoom on your computer or phone. And you can use the link for Zoom found at isearchmonterey.org. You can also dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four or six six nine two five four five two five two. And our meeting ID is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. And to make a public comment, simply raise your hand using Zoom, or if you're connected by telephone, dial star nine. And then I will prompt you to unmute yourself by pressing star six. And I'll take a look here at the public comment. It looks like I do have one hand raised. And so I just unmuted Christopher Barlow. And you can go ahead and unmute yourself to share your public comment.
Hello, just wanted to make sure my sound is coming through.
Yes.
Good. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, I saw this come up and I wanted to call in just to emphasize, you know, how important this is these days. And I wanted to ask if there was any more outreach, not just on city owned land, but uh, private lands as well. Uh, you know, we're talking about Old Capital Site. And going up on Viejo Road, it's just scary how much fuel load is out there. Um, you know, the point where I ride my bike out there. I didn't want to be out there late. You know, the point where I ride my bike out there, I didn't want to be out there late summer. And there's a lot of private houses that have very difficult access. So, you know, I think as a community, if we could all, if there's one thing everybody should be able to get behind, it's, it's some of these fire prevention efforts. I also wanted to ask, I know when, on a residential level, when we remove older tree, I know this is forest reduction, but is there any requirement to plant new trees that are spaced to allow for better forest to grow in the future from a fuel prevention standard? And I think that that would probably be the end of my comments there.
Thank you. And just a friendly reminder to anyone that would like to make a public comment, please simply raise your hand using Zoom. And if you're calling on the telephone, please press star nine if you'd like to comment on this item. And it doesn't look like I have anyone at this point that's ready for a public comment. And I'll let you know if we were, oh, I stand corrected. Looks like I have another public comment from Laura. I just went ahead and gave you permission to speak if you'd like to share your public comment.
Hi, good afternoon, or good evening rather. I live in the city of Carmel, actually Carmel Highlands. And recently they, they created the Carmel Climate Committee through the City Hall in Carmel by the Sea. And they've got archive meetings if you'd like to go ahead and check them out. And I believe it was a month or two ago that they gave a presentation that was hosted through the AIA Monterey Bay, American Institute of Architects. They have a particular series called the COTE series, C-O-T-E, which is an acronym for Care of the Environment. And they hosted a webinar that was phenomenal. It had three different, four different, three or four different panelists speaking and two of which were landscape architects. And it was all about how to, it was basically, I think if I remember correctly, the title of the webinar was called Designing for Fire Beyond the Code. And it was extremely informative and definitely well worth watching. And I should know the name of the organization that went ahead and did this exercise, but it was either Cal Fire, one of the organizations locally, that went, went around and raided all of the houses and all of the, well, all of the properties, all of the parcels in Carmel by the Sea. Excuse me, in regards to how resilient to fire that they are. And that might be something that the cities of Monterey and Pacific, potentially Pacific Grove might want to do as well. And to access more specifics around what, who offers that service and who did that service, I would say go to the archived meeting through the Carmel City, City Hall and Carmel Climate Meeting is what it's called. And I'm not there. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other calls?
Let me take a quick look here. Just one more friendly reminder, if anyone would like to share a public comment, please raise your hand and if you're calling in, simply hit star nine. And it doesn't look like we have anyone with their hands raised at this time.
Thanks, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Is there any staff comments answering the questions that this, these folks brought up?
I can weigh in.
Oh, please, Justin, thank you.
All right. I can weigh in about the, the public comment about tree replacement. We do require replacement typically for, for most trees removed on, on private property. The exception being if there are too many trees to reasonably be supported and fire danger and forest health would be part of that, part of that equation. And also Viejo Road, most of that is part of the Old Capital Site until you hit that hairpin turn, then you leave Monterey City Limits and enter county where we don't really have much enforcement of many fire code. Our department doesn't, doesn't handle that area.
Thank you. How about the recording that the lady spoke about?
The webinar.
Have you heard about, Justin? I had, I wrote it down, but I, I haven't listened to that webinar.
Go ahead, Justin.
I, I haven't heard of that one specifically either, but there, there's a whole number of local organizations, Cal Fire, through Forest Service and other different, the Fire Safe Council, Monterey Fire Safe Council. They, they all host these different events. So any, any new information is always welcome.
Thank you. Just to me, it's just a resource that when people are looking to build or to refresh their property, they could look, get some ideas, that's what I'm suggesting. Thank you. Any other calls, Sarah?
It does not like, look like we have anyone with their hands raised at this time.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the commission for comments or questions.
I have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mike.
Terry took my, my suggestion of, of including the, the Old Capital Site in this, in this program. And, and I was assured by staff, thank you staff, that that was going to happen next term, next turnaround. But that is, that is a very worrisome area because it's, it's totally wild at this point and it's closed. And so that means that nobody can camp up there. But I think the first guy that camps up there and starts a fire is going to start a hell of a fire. So we, we need to take a look at Old Capital Site very serious.
Thank you. Any others?
Sorry to steal your thunder, Mike.
Sold.
Any other comments or questions?
My only comment is that, I mean, this is something that clearly needs to happen so that we can, you know, reduce and mitigate potential fire hazards throughout the city. There's, these are all green belts that are owned by the city and the city has the obligation to maintain them. And, and, you know, to me, it's, it's, it's a no brainer. If anybody doesn't have, have any comments, I, I move to approve as submitted with the binding recommendations that have been presented.
I, I actually have a, a comment and a question. I worked in that area for decades and poison oak goes to the, almost to the top of those trees that's been growing so long and it's such a fuel load. As, because it's directly connected to our fire danger within the city, does fire talk with the county about such things as reduction of the adjoining lots?
Justin?
Justin?
Uh, I, I don't want to, I'm tangentially aware of what the fire department does. We work together closely on the things in the city limit and there, there has been more push from the community and just general good practice for us to communicate. My understanding is that at least all the fire departments play well together and they, they do communicate and share concerns. But that would be better answered by someone from the fire department, which I don't know if we have anyone on the line from them.
Thank you. That answers my question.
I have a question. Is there a mechanism in place for adding areas such as the one that Terry and Mike mentioned, the Old Capital Site?
We would have to include it in the next plan. But in the meantime, there is going to be fuel reduction on that site. Kim and Justin can.
There, there already has been some, yeah, two months ago. So that's, that's a good sign.
I guess I, I've been supportive of the motion, but you know, not to be sneaky, I, I imagine there are some emergency situations where fuel reduction could happen without this time consuming EIR process. Anything the staff can do to try to do what Hansson suggested and, you know, collect ten years' worth of activities with one report instead of all the, the, the EIRs are so cumbersome and expensive to create. I mean, you've done such a professional job on it. It's, it would be great to try to minimize all that reporting and, and paperwork as much as possible.
So once the environmental document is certified, it's, it's good for an extended period of time. So that's what we've been trying to accomplish. What's happened between the last fuel reduction plan and this one is the project description changed. And then clearly it's going to have to change again with the acquisition of the Old Capital Site. So we will only update it as necessary. And this, this plan and environmental document were well underway while we acquired Old Capital Site. And it just shows you how long it takes to sort of piece all this together. So I think we've heard very loudly and clearly about the Old Capital Site. And it's also on the city council's work program, I noticed. And we'll be working with Justin to look in at a, because we, we have to do surveys of the Old Capital Site. It's, it's vegetation is slightly different than the other areas. So we need to amend the plan to have that happen.
And that'll require you to do another initial study.
Correct, we'll have to amend the green belt fuel reduction plan to include another green belt area and then maybe we're done after that, I'm not sure.
Thanks, Kim. We have a first by Hansson, do we have a second?
Yeah, I, I second that.
Second by Dan. Any other comments, questions? Then I'll ask for a real call.
Thank you for repeating those first and second. First, we have Chair Brathfield.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Friedman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Millich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed.
I.
Thank you, that was unanimous.
Thank you. Motion carries, appreciate it. The second, next item that was on the agenda, as I understand, has been pulled. So we will not be discussing that. And correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, but we have already, the next item is scheduled for seven o'clock. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the application for thirty-four C L Avisto appeal was withdrawn today at about two o'clock. So we were ready to go, but the, the appellateist withdrawn their appeal. So as a result, we'll just come back tonight.
Well, thank you. If no other comments, then I would like to close this meeting until, adjourn until seven o'clock. Thank you. If no other comments, then I would like to close this meeting until... or adjourn until 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a Monterey City Planning Commission meeting for December 8.
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you, and I think that we need a roll call. Present. But all of a sudden, no one, I don't hear anything.
Jennifer, you're muted.
Thank you for that, Kim, sorry. First, we have Chair Brassfield.
Present.
And Vice Chair Freeman.
Here.
And Commissioner Dawson. Never got back on, okay, Almar Kim is absent. And next, we have Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Milich.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa.
Present.
And Commissioner Reed.
Present.
Okay, so that is everyone except for Commissioner Dawson.
Someone gives them a call to remind them we're back on. Okay, next item is item number five for discussion, and I assume that we will have a presentation.
Yes, thank you. My name is Fernando Roperoi, I'm a Senior Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. And today, I will be presenting the Draft Transportation Adaptation Plan. Let me pull up my screen. Okay. Welcome everyone to this public meeting. Today is intended to be a discussion of the work we've done to date on sea level rise transportation adaptation. And the purpose of this meeting is to gather public feedback, discuss the plan, the draft plan which was included in your agenda report. And this is a public meeting, so we welcome public feedback during the public comment period.
That reminds me, if I may interrupt, we were supposed to have public comment on items not on the agenda. I apologize.
Oh, no problem.
So if we could, Sarah, I think that's your cue to recite the phone numbers?
Sure, Chair, I'll just take this moment to go over some information on how community members can participate and hear public comments. We do encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov, which is a secure service for use by government agencies. Joining on Zoom is preferred because you're connected live to the meeting in real time. And this meeting is also streamed on youtube.com/cityofmonterey, where there's approximately a 10-second delay, and on Comcast Channel 25, where there can be up to a 90-second delay. If you plan to make a public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom on the app or by telephone, making sure you join it in time to accommodate any delays. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer or phone, use the link or phone number on the agenda, which is posted at isearchmonterey.org. And since this meeting has begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab on that site. To join by telephone, you can dial 833-568-8864, or 669-254-5252, and then you'll be prompted to enter the webinar ID, which is 1619908049, followed by the pound key. And if you're prompted to enter a participant ID, please press pound. And detailed instructions on how to use Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. You can also find that information located at the bottom chyron of your screen if you're watching the meeting. To make a public comment, please raise your hand using the Zoom function, or if you're connected by telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute yourself when called upon. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak, and we ask all public commenters to turn off TV or computer speakers, or simply go into another room while connected, as any background noise will interfere with the broadcast. Lastly, I will call on each public speaker in order of hands raised, and the Chair has designated a three-minute time limit for today's meeting, where a countdown will appear on the screen. So we ask that you please stay within your time limit, and we look forward to receiving your public comments. And with that being said, I just want to check the public comment and see if there's some commentary for items that are not on tonight's agenda, which we do have a couple hands raised. So I will go ahead and allow, first off, we have Pat Venza. I'm going to go ahead and allow you to speak, and you can go ahead and unmute yourself and share your public comment.
Hi there.
If you could step away from the speakers or go into another room, there might be some feedback with the broadcast if you're watching the meeting.
Is that better?
That's better.
This is Pat Venza, and I would like to bring to your attention the parking lot improvement plans from the MPUSD report. This is not part of the EIR, but rather it is a separate document. It should be part of the EIR, and I'm hoping we get it to be. But in that parking lot improvement plan, which I think relates to the Planning Commission, has added way over 100 parking sites, all of which exit onto Logan Lane. Now, all of you know the size of Logan Lane. It's not really a street, it's more of an alley. It's one lane at best, when it doesn't have anybody parked on it. So I'm hoping that your traffic engineer and
This is the Monterey City Planning Commission meeting for December eighth.
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. And I think that we need a roll call. Present. But all of a sudden, my, no one, I don't hear anything.
Jennifer, you're muted.
Thank you for that, Kim. Sorry. First, we have Chair Brassfield.
Present.
And Vice Chair Freeman.
Here.
And Commissioner Dawson. Never got back on. Okay, Almar Kim is absent. And next we have Commissioner Fletcher. Commissioner Milich.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa.
Present.
And Commissioner Reed.
Present.
Okay, so that is everyone except for Commissioner Dawson.
Someone give them, someone gives them a call to remind them we're back on. Okay, next item is item number five for discussion, and I assume that we will have a presentation.
Yes, thank you. My name is Fernando Ropery. I'm a Senior Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. And today I will be presenting the Draft Transportation Adaptation Plan. Let me pull up my screen. Welcome everyone to this public meeting. Today is intended to be a discussion of the work we've done to date on sea level rise transportation adaptation. And the purpose of this meeting is to gather public feedback, discuss the plan, the draft plan which was included in your agenda report. And this is a public meeting, so we welcome public feedback during the, the public comment period.
That reminds me, if I may interrupt, we were supposed to have public comment not on items not on the agenda. I apologize.
Oh, no problem.
So if we could, Sarah, I think that's your cue to recite the phone numbers?
Sure, Chair. I'll just take this moment to go over some information on how community members can participate and hear public comments. We do encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov, which is a secure service for use by government agencies. Joining on Zoom is preferred because you're connected live to the meeting in real time. And this meeting is also streamed on youtube.com/cityofmonterey, where there's approximately a 10-second delay, and on Comcast Channel 25, where there can be up to a 90-second delay. If you plan to make a public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom on the app or by telephone, making sure you join it in time to accommodate any delays. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer or phone, use the link or phone number on the agenda, which is posted at isarchmonterey.org. And since this meeting has begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab on that site. To join by telephone, you can dial 833-568-8864, or 669-254-5252. And then you'll be prompted to enter the webinar ID, which is 161-990-8039, followed by the pound key. And if you're prompted to enter a participant ID, please press pound. And detailed instructions on how to use Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. You can also find that information located at the bottom chyron of your screen if you're watching the meeting. To make a public comment, please raise your hand using the Zoom function. Or if you're connected by telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute yourself when called upon. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. And we ask all public commenters to turn off TV or computer speakers, or simply go into another room while connected, as any background noise will interfere with the broadcast. Lastly, I will call on each public speaker in order of hands raised. And the Chair has designated a three-minute time limit for today's meeting, where a countdown will appear on the screen. So we ask that you please stay within your time limit, and we look forward to receiving your public comments. And with that being said, I just want to check the public comment and see if there's some commentary for items that are not on tonight's agenda, which we do have a couple hands raised. So I will go ahead and allow, first off, we have Pat Venza. I'm going to go ahead and allow you to speak, and you can go ahead and unmute yourself and share your public comment.
Hi there.
If you could step away from the speakers or go into another room, there might be some feedback with the broadcast if you're watching the meeting.
Is that better?
That's better. Thank you so much.
This is Pat Venza, and I would like to bring to your attention the parking lot improvement plans from the MPUSD report. This is not part of the EIR, but rather, but rather it is a separate document. It should be part of the EIR, and I'm hoping we get it to be. But in that parking lot improvement plan, which I think relates to the Planning Commission, has added way over 100 parking sites, all of which exit onto Logan Lane. Now, all of you know the size of Logan Lane. It's not really a street. It's more of an alley. It's one lane at best, when it doesn't have anybody parked on it. So I'm hoping that your traffic engineer Andrea Rennie will address this issue along with the members of this commission. Because this is like an accident waiting to happen, let alone the safety issues of of the safety issues of ambulances, fire department, police having to use that during events at the high school. So once again, this is called, if you go to the MPUSD website, it's the Parking Lot Improvement Plans. And I'm hoping you'll all read it, because it is very scary as to what is going to be happening on Logan Lane and, and to those residents there. And the exiting from Logan Lane onto Pacific or onto Martin Street. I think this is a huge issue coming up before us. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you for that comment. And let me take a look here at the attendees. It looks like we've got a couple other hands raised. And so let's see, next up, I do have Laura. So Laura, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to speak and share your public comment. And it looks like you're unmuted.
Me? I, yes, just slightly.
All right, can you hear me better now?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, absolutely. Thank you. It's more of a question that I've got. I was reading something in the Monterey County Weekly saying that there was going to be a discussion in regards to two responses to sea level rise for Monterey City. It's in tonight's, it was a hyperlink to this meeting. And I didn't see that on the agenda for tonight's meeting when I looked online. So I'm just curious, is that coming up for this evening for discussion?
I don't know what link you're referring to. I'm sorry.
It was in the Monterey County Weekly, and it's in regards to a, an article that, it was a little blurb that said, and there was a hyperlink saying that there was going to be a discussion in tonight's meeting about two different responses, two possible responses to sea level rise.
It's item number five on the agenda.
Is it? Because I looked online and I didn't see it on the agenda. Okay, I'm glad. So it will be discussed in tonight's meeting?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And then we'll be opening that up for public comment later on.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Okay, and it doesn't appear that we have any additional hands raised at this time.
Okay, and I, again, Fernanda, I apologize for the delay. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks again. Let me share my screen. Great. So here we are again. Welcome, everyone. This is the public meeting for the Draft Transportation Adaptation Plan. And the, the purpose of this meeting is to discuss the draft plan and all the work that we've done to date on sea level rise adaptation. This is a public meeting, so the purpose, one of the main purposes is to gather public feedback. And I would also like to add that no decision will be made today. This is just a discussion and to answer questions and to provide feedback. The city applied for and received an adaptation grant from Caltrans to study the impacts of sea level rise to our city transportation network and to identify adaptation strategies. The first thing that we did as staff was to hold a stakeholder meeting, which included different city departments such as Public Works, Police, and Fire, and among others, as well as some of our local stakeholders, including the US Army Presidio of Monterey and Naval Academy, Naval Activity of Monterey and PS. We also had participation from the California Coastal Commission. So we had this meeting in the beginning to identify flood consequences and risks to these stakeholders and the city. And then, sorry, during that first outreach effort, we also had a community meeting on May 13th of 2020, where we presented 75, 27-plus adaptation options. And people, the public was able to participate. It was a virtual meeting, and they were able to take a public survey that then informed our choices for adaptation options. Those choices were then included in this draft report that was included in your agenda today. And next steps will be discussed by our consultants today. Our consultants are Frederick Penter from Kimley Horn and Associates, and Rebecca Verity of GEI Consultants. And they have done a lot of work preparing for today. They will be able to answer your questions, and they will tell us what these strategies are, and the pros and cons of each, and what we could do in the future. So with that, I will keep turning the slides, but I will ask that Frederick and Rebecca begin the presentation.
Okay, thank you so much, Venza. The main question we joined Monterey to ask was really, how do we keep Monterey's transportation network moving in the face of sea level rise over time? And you can answer that question looking at, looking at it from different lenses. From the lenses, how do we change transport? And Fernanda, if you mute yourself, I think there'll be less feedback. From the lens of how do we adjust the transportation and let sea level rise happen, or from the lens of how do we stop sea level rise outside the borders of the city? So we'll look at that as we move forward. Next slide, please. We base all of our adaptation work and risk analysis on flood predictions that you've already seen. So I'm going to go through these really quickly, as quickly as possible. These layers you're seeing here are from FEMA. These are temporary storm flood risk maps. In green, you're seeing the flooding that would occur from a 100-year storm, or a storm that would occur on average once a century. And in light blue, you're seeing the flooding that would occur from a 500-year storm, or a storm that would occur on average once every 500 years. Of course, we're seeing these storms happening more frequently across the country. But this is the data that we're moving with for now on temporary storms. Next slide, please. At the Revell Coastal Sea Level Rise projections for the city and the Moffett and Nickel Wave Impact Study. So this is, it's not a worst-case scenario, but it's a bad-case scenario. Best-case scenario, because when you're doing risk planning, you don't choose the least risk, you choose some reasonable large risk. So this is a reasonable but large risk scenario for what would happen potentially by 2030. But really, this is the flooding that happens after eight inches of sea level rise, or 0.7 feet. And on this map, you can see a green arrow pointing to Del Monte Avenue downtown. That's the first road that floods in the city. Next. As we move to 2.4 feet of flooding, most likely to occur in about 40 years, we start to see wave impacts up on Canary Row. The ocean does not reach Canary Row, but waves during a large 100-year storm flood. By end of century, we're seeing roadway impacts at Highway One, where it borders, where it intersects with 218 and the Seaside border, and start to see Coast Guard pier cut off from traffic. So we've added those one as well. Next slide. So our, our role was to understand how those floods would impact traffic, but also how they would impact the city as a whole. So I'm going to talk first about the city as a whole. Frederick will jump in to talk about traffic specifically. And this is in a do-nothing scenario. If we protect in no way, what will happen? So Fernanda mentioned that stakeholder meeting where we sat with Public Works and Department of Fire Department. We showed them those same maps, and we said, okay, if this road floods, what in your experience will happen? And the first thing we saw was we have traffic accidents, we have reroutes with sea flooding, with coastal saltwater flooding. It's also very common to have electrical fires, and of course, the floodwaters themselves do damage to homes and businesses. Advance, please. Each of those then leads to a complex web of other issues. I'm not going to walk you through these in detail. You can look at them in the report if you'd like. But a lot of interlocking consequences that flow down from that first level till next. Finally, you get to citywide impacts on public health, traffic, the economy, relocation of homes and businesses, and impacts to quality of life and ecology. So we want to avoid this. That's specifically without accident, sea level rise will disrupt mobility and impact daily activity, will damage homes and impact public health, and potentially displace residents, and will hurt businesses in Monterey's economy. So Frederick's going to jump in and talk about the traffic-specific impacts of those same floods.
Thank you, Rebecca. So the first question is, how do we actually analyze what would happen with traffic if roads start flooding? So the appropriate tool to use for this is Travel Demand Model, and the Ambac Travel Demand Model that sort of covers travel in the, in the whole of the Ambac region, so it's Monterey County, Santa Cruz County, is, is being used because it connects origins and destinations, and it illustrates how people travel on a daily basis between where they live and where they work, and they also do other discretionary trips, and shopping, going to school. The, what we then do in the model is we delete the flooded roadways out of that model, and we ask the model to do a run. The model is still trying to connect these origins and destinations, so it starts rerouting traffic. And it reroutes it along either fastest or least congested paths. But what I'm going to show you is with too much congestion, that this is activity-based model. So the model identifies, but listen, it's not feasible anymore to connect origins and destinations. So you will see how with increased congestion, the city becomes the less attractive place to work and play, which means that, you know, there's economic impacts, and travel into the city actually goes down. Next slide. So these slides are really busy, but I'm not going to focus on detail, but you'll see, this is the first slide with 0.7 feet sea level rise. The red line shows that Del Monte will be flooded, right? So if Del Monte floods, where the traffic goes. The model shows that the traffic goes to Pearl Street, and it goes to Fremont Street, significant red boxes, and it goes to Pacific Street. Other big increases that we see is onto David and Highway 68. Smaller increases on the orange, and then of course decreases on the green, and the decreases are because we cannot go that way. Next slide. Once we get to 2.4 feet of rise, sea level rise, the, the lighthouse tunnel is flooded, and Pearl Street is also flooded. Now we have more traffic on Fremont, and on all the other roads, we see just tremendous increases of traffic. And next slide, please. So this is at the 5.2 feet sea level rise, where we also have Fremont eliminated. You know, where Lake Estero meets Fremont Street is where they will be flooding. At this point, there is tremendous congestion. The, the, the traffic also starts looking for gaps in small local streets. There's cut-through traffic in the neighborhoods. You know, but, and so you can again see tremendous increases on other roadway networks and other streets in the, in the street system. Next slide, please. So on this slide, there's, there's two elements that I want you to look at. The first one is on the left-hand side. There, you can see there's a red line that runs across all traffic that basically enters Monterey, right? And we'd need to go across the roads that would be flooded. So we crossed Del Monte at the Postgraduate School, Naval School, we crossed Highway One, and we crossed Mon, Mark Thomas. So all those trips add up to about 145,000 cars on a daily basis that come into the city. If you look at the bar charts on the right, the orange bars show the 2040 volumes with no sea level rise. So at Del Monte, 45,000 cars, Highway One at Aguero, 91,000 cars, Mark Thomas at 8,000 cars a day. As we then move to 0.7 feet of sea level rise, which is represented by the purple bars, you can see how the trips on Del Monte goes down, right? Because we cannot cross the lake anymore where Del Monte, where Alice Estero is. You can see Highway One goes up, and Mark Thomas goes up. And then at 2.4 feet, you can see the yellow bars where the traffic goes even down even more on Del Monte, because there's now, we cut off Pearl Street, Highway One goes up even more, but you're getting into congested conditions, Mark Thomas goes up as well. Then at 5.2 feet, which presents severe congestion, and we can see that there's the big drop actually in volumes on the daily basis getting to the city. And you can see how volumes actually started going down or plateauing. So at the bottom, starting at 145,000, you know, if these roads all flood, we'll go down to 120,000 vehicles per day that want to enter the city. So that is a good 15% reduction in economic activity, if you can put it that way. Next slide. So illustrations, you know, the top picture is taken Miami flooding with existing storm surge. These happen all the time. For those of you who've been to Miami know that if the rain clouds start gathering, they put their pumps on, right? The, the streets are severely impacted already, and you know, the east coast is way ahead of this, but flooding is part of their lifestyle, but it is very disrupting. The image on the bottom of this slide shows you at 2.4 feet of sea level rise, that the water levels will actually touch the soffit of the, of the lighthouse tunnel, right? So the lighthouse tunnel will not be there anymore. Next slide. So road infrastructure in general, you know, wanted to highlight what we're losing here, right? So the top left picture is a picture that was taken in 1987 after a storm when Del Monte will have flooded. I think this is looking towards the, you know, towards the downtown. And the picture on the right is an impact of as sea level rise and storm surge happens is where, and this is a picture taken on North Fremont Street when you did the recent construction of the bike lanes last year, with the scouring of, of the stormwater system. And there were actually potholes that were, that were discovered underneath the roadway, and thankfully, they didn't collapse, right? But these are things that are real. They're there today. So, so sea level rise, that storm surge and wave action is already working underneath our, our, our city. Bottom left, highway flooding. So we showed you that one of the at-risk locations would be at Highway One, Highway 218, where you sort of get the city boundary starts. You know, I think we all remember images from last year and the year before, New Orleans, Houston, you know, all the flooding on the freeways, what would happen? So, you know, safety problems, accidents, people not getting through. And the middle picture here is the wreck trail that was flooded, and this is what would happen. You know, this was taken after, I think, the water receded. And then, of course, there's tremendous investment in road infrastructure and the signal system and all the controllers. So the signals will fail as well, right? When that storm happens, electric failures, again, resulting in congestion. Next slide, please. So Rebecca is going to walk you through the adaptation for flooded roadway area.
Okay, so we identified four regions, which I, I talked to you at the very beginning about. And we came up with different solutions for each of these regions. So very, very briefly. Two different levee options at Highway One, Circle Number One. A very standard levee, which is just a big earthen berm, or something called an ecotone levee, which really models the ecosystem and looks a lot like what beach and handstands. It, it looks like a natural dune when you're done. So the, the couple different levee options there. Downtown, we had a really, this is the area we focused on the most as the highest risk, a large number of options. So we had multiple levee styles, multiple seawall files, multiple combinations of levees and seawalls, raising the wharf, and something called managed retreat, which we're going to talk about. At the Coast Guard Pier, just a little access impingement. At the Coast Guard Pier, uh just a little access impingement there, so revetment of the walls would both be appropriate. And then up on Canary Row, again, those impacts were really from large storm wave. So we looked both at all seawalls at at Canary Row level, at road level, or at potentials for putting um additional artificial reefs and other wave dampening uh methods offshore there. So those are are in the report, but our talk tonight is really going to focus on on the downtown area. Because those are where your near term risks are. At locations one, three and four, we're looking at mid century and beyond at the moment. So near term is downtown, so advance please, Fernanda. Um and one more please. We came up with, as I said, a number of different options. On the left, flood barriers. And I just discussed multiple options with levies and seawalls and combinations thereof. Um and we'll walk through those. And then on the right, reimagining downtown entirely in a process called managed retreat, which is where we carefully and slowly let the sea go where it's going anyway. Um while adapting our shoreline and our transportation. So Frederick will talk about those specific adaptation options after I talk about the the flood barrier options. Next please. So the area most at risk of flooding by end of century is about a three quarter of a mile stretch along Del Monte and across the Fisherman's Wharf parking area. The existing peninsula wreck trail is shown in red. And a potential location for a seawall is shown in this slide in yellow, just running right along the wreck trail. And at this level of study, we just wanted to choose what seemed like the simplest, most straightforward option. So that's where we placed it. Let me show you a couple of of sketches of what those seawalls could look like. So on the left, um we have a seawall with an elevated coastal trail. So you can see the wreck trail has been lifted up thirteen feet above where it currently is. On the ocean side of this black seawall, we've put really large armoring. These are two ton stones piled up as wave dampening mechanisms. This level of protection is meant to protect out to end of century sea level. So twenty one hundred or five point two feet plus what's currently considered a hundred year storm. So those big waves during a storm plus five point two feet of sea level rise would require with this design of seawall, at least a thirteen foot barrier. This one's got a pretty hefty footprint, it takes up more real estate than the one on the right, which is a narrow wall and a vertical wall. It doesn't require as much messing about with the existing land. On the dry side of the wall, you can see the wreck trail is exactly where it is now at the same elevation. But because of vertical wall, you've all watched ocean waves hit big boulders and you know those waves go running right up that vertical wall. So that's what it does on a wall like this. So with a vertical wall like this, without the wave dampening, you would need seventeen feet of height to get that same level of protection. So the range for these two seawalls, both provide the same level of protection, both three quarters of a mile long, sixty million to about ninety million dollars as a current dollar estimate. And this is a high level early estimate. Okay, next please, Fernanda. In this same area downtown, I don't want to neglect that we actually looked at a lot of other options. I don't have time to show them all to you tonight, I'm just going to show you one. So this is what's called an ecotone levy. You can see in the in the graphic on the left, before it floods, after, it looks like a lovely, lovely beach, but buried in there, there's a levy. So the planning department's been doing a lot of beach nourishment work to maintain the existing beaches and the existing habitat, aesthetics, recreation. That's what an ecotone levy would do. But it would have the added benefit of flood protection as well and and future sea level rise flood protection. Now, I talked about one of those seawalls having a wider footprint than the other. This has the widest footprint of any of the options that we looked at. So if we were going to protect just to two point four feet of sea level rise, mid century plus a hundred year storm, we're looking at about a hundred and fifty feet of footprint, a hundred feet to a hundred and fifty feet. So the uppermost image, where I've got an orange overlay on the beach and the park at Window on the Bay, it would take up half to three quarters of that orange space. We're not building the the levy into the ocean. We we would need to take up existing land to do it and it would have a a significant footprint, but it would end up with more of a natural feel. So as I said, many, many other options and combinations of options can be found in the report in the appendices. Okay, let's move forward. So living behind flood barriers has, it's got benefits and it's got um some concerns. So the obvious benefits are that we don't have to mess with existing land uses. We preserve our existing land uses, we preserve our existing transportation for longer than we otherwise would, not in perpetuity. And the reason I say not in perpetuity is there's a lot of hidden concerns that come with living behind a flood barrier. The first is that groundwater is rising just as the seas are rising. And we're already experiencing that throughout California with basements flooding, with those big sinkholes that Frederick mentioned, those are happening and causing millions of dollars of damage. Um so a seawall doesn't hold those back. Those will happen more and more in those low lying areas that would otherwise have flooded. Storm drains become a problem because when the sea is higher than Lake Alastero, as it will be by about mid century in these projections, the ocean without barriers will flow backwards through storm drains. And you can see on the on the right hand side, the middle circle, that's a storm drain where the ocean is coming up through the manhole instead of draining out through the manhole. And that's a that's a common concern, there's engineering solutions, but they cost money. Um and again, as as rain happens, just regular rainfall, that will no longer flow out to bay through gravity and we'll have to install pumps. As Frederick mentioned with Miami, the pumps turn on when the rain happens in Miami. That needs to start happening in Monterey a little later. Because otherwise, the entire downtown area becomes a lake. And there's of course, public health and safety um concerns always when you're living below sea level. Next slide please, Fernanda. So the alternative is a completely uh new downtown for Monterey. And this is a a concept called planned retreat or managed retreat. Um and this is something that FEMA is really asking communities dealing with sea level rise to look at really, really carefully. I apologize, some of my my photos came out rather fuzzy in this and I don't know why. Um but as FEMA has paid out over and over and over for hurricanes and coastal floods in exactly the same locations, they're realizing the repeat flooding is happening much more frequently than it used to. And the communities are safer living outside of the flood plain. So they're asking communities to look at managed retreat. And Monterey is in this amazing position that no other city in California has. Because you've got this lovely hilly geography, your low lying area has the potential to form a new bay or harbor or estuary. And there's almost no other city I can think of that has this geography. And it gives you some amazing opportunities to add coastline instead of losing coastline. This configuration actually adds two, two point something miles, two point one miles of new beach. It adds two point one miles potentially of new recreation trail, of new oceanfront dining and shopping. It adds economic opportunities where almost every other city in California is just facing economic loss. So you're in an amazing position to take advantage of this in a new way. But of course, it has concerns, you're losing land, you're losing homes and you're losing businesses. And there's there's no possible way to even try to undersell that that is that is a painful. That is a painful part of of any retreat plan. So Frederick is going to talk about uh how transportation would work if this is the direction that we go.
So we've looked at three options here um in in trying to mitigate this impact on traffic that we could potentially see. Um that could be seen as reasonable, um you know, you're going to see it's still very expensive. So number one A is uh is is a Del Monte alternative. Uh one B is combinations of Paul Street enhancements. And one C is uh we need to uh retain some some capacity on Fremont, raise it where it would be flooded and also turn it into probably the the highest carrier uh arterial from uh you know, from from the east to the west into downtown. Um the the flooded area uh in in at the Highway one to eighteen intersection, the interchange that we saw earlier, um that is Caltrans jurisdiction. Um so to protect that roadway will most probably uh be conducted by Caltrans. Um I, there is some property from this, from the city that uh is is outside of the scope of this. But from a roadway perspective, that will be a Caltrans project. So I'm going to discuss these three alternatives with you now, next slide. So the first one is what we call the Del Monte Viaduct. Um it will be basically a very long bridge, um close to a mile long, point eight miles long. And we are envisioning um if it it will be a two lane facility. Um so to accommodate either transit or cars on it, plus the pedestrian facility and the wreck trail um to maintain the wreck trail capacity, you know, and and that great feature that the city has. Um and it will basically extend then along the approximately the alignment of of um of Del Monte where it is now. Um of course, all your major utilities run along Del Monte, so there's a tremendous cost. All of those need to be relocated, our estimated cost for building this viaduct, is sorting out all your um utility concerns and relocating them. And um also, uh you know, having the bike trail on it. Um and there's going to be a lot of planning, environmental and coastal, the concerns that goes with it is a good three hundred million dollars. Next option. Um of next slide, sorry. So below is 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 typical examples that you see, you know, you can always go for something that's a little bit more traditional on the right hand side. And on the left hand side is this one's from the Netherlands, is something that's a little bit more modern. Next slide please. So the next alternative or or arterial that we're trying to protect is what we call the Sloth Pool. Um artery that goes into the city. So what we're doing here is, um you know, vehicles would come down slope from Highway one, make a left turn onto Sloth and there will be, Sloth will be one to four lanes. And then uh you know, they do the, they either go up slope towards Fremont or they turn to get to Pearl Street and do the crossings and head into to to downtown. Um you know, both these bridges would have to be enhanced, but we maintain two lanes only um on on this facility. Costs us about a hundred million dollars. Uh and this is one location where we're also recommending uh what we call managed lanes. So um next slide please, Fernanda. So what this is at the at the two upper pictures show you what it looks like now, the view um you know, for at these two bridges. And then what we do in the morning on the left hand side, as we know, this traffic is heading into downtown. As we basically open up two lanes and all traffic just goes in, so there's no outbound traffic. And then in the afternoon, you cannot go westbound, so all traffic will only go eastbound, like towards Highway one. So you will have uh what we call intelligent transportation systems and um to help guide traffic. And then also, there is the allocation of of the Monterey Bay Trail, the wreck trail would also be then accommodated along this uh this option or this arterial. Um next slide please. There's a further option, um uh much more disruptive, and that is to sort of realign Del Monte um as a two lane facility, uh you know, coming through the neighborhood and then crossing at Pearl Street. Um this will, of course, like I said, be very disruptive, destroy several communities and homes and businesses. Um and open it up for redevelopment, of course, I don't want to say that. So so a big, big change for the community. And then the wreck trail uh could potentially also then run along the beach. Uh this option about a hundred and twenty twenty four million dollars, just we did not um include any right of way or property acquisition. These are merely engineering costs for roadways and for utility services. Next slide please. So Fremont Street is your, it it probably has the lowest cost with the best investment in trying to maintain capacity leading into downtown. Uh you currently have, you have four to six lanes um on this facility, five to six lanes. Um you need to raise it because it will be flooded um close to Lake Alastero. Um so there is substantial improvement, so turning this into a six lane facility and then um you know, we we are heavily going to rely on on transit service to also transport people into downtown. So turning immediately into a bus only facility where buses could drive and have exclusive right of way. These roads will be congested, so we want to give transit priority to get in and out of the downtown. This, the cost of this alternative is about thirty one million dollars. Next slide please. So what we did with these roadways is to try and give you options, right? And show you the capacities that you have. Looking at the existing three roads, Del Monte, Sloth and Fremont, Sloth is also with Pearl. I gives you about approximately nine, the capacity of about ninety seven thousand cars a day, right? Um in twenty forty, um you know, the forecast is about seventy eight, seventy nine thousand cars a day. With the adaptation options, Del Monte Viaduct will carry about only two lanes, will carry about fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand cars a day. Sloth can and Pearl can be pushed and used and carry about twenty three thousand cars a day with that managed lanes, where we basically have two, two, two lanes in in the morning, two lanes out in the afternoon and the off peak, it will be a normal two lane uh facility. You can travel in either direction. And then you can see where we push capacity onto Fremont Boulevard as we retain the six lanes, but we bank on at least twenty percent transit, right? So twenty percent transit means you need to transport ten thousand people a day in buses between the the Highway one and the downtown. So what we do not have in this is a transit investment, so I can share with you that we need about fifteen buses to transport ten thousand people a day. Um you know, those probably when time we get to this, we need to buy this, those buses go at a million bucks a piece now. Um you know, and of course, operating costs uh run slow, it runs between three hundred and five hundred thousand dollars per annum on 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 any transit system. So you have options, yeah, we try to maintain the capacity with the roadways we provided. Um you do have the option of saying, well, we want transit only on the Del Monte Viaduct. Um you know, and have the buses run there and leave the cars on 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 Pearl, Sloth and Fremont. But here are, this is where we we we, but I think what we have determined as you need to be able to continue to move traffic um in the future with sea level rise. Next slide. This is a summary of the costs, um none of these are cheap, very expensive, Del Monte at three hundred million. The Pearl Sloth options, hundred and hundred and twenty four million, and then the Fremont alternative, thirty one million dollars. Next slide please. So Rebecca mentioned that we had um a survey, a public survey um that we circulated, we had about eighty respondents to that. And I we summarized, there was a, I think forty five questions or so. We summarized the findings of that into three basic uh slides, right? Rebecca, next slide please. So the first one is that the the there was very strong preference towards multimodal improvements, right? That means um almost two thirds of the community said, we like the fact that we have buses and bikes and people walk and bike, that that's the more sustainable way to get people into downtown. A third of the people said, we should, there should be roadway capacity improvements, we want to be able to use our cars to get to work. Um next slide please. Very interesting was also that the strong feeling, three quarters of the community said, we prefer managed retreat. Whereas a quarter said, we prefer barriers. Next slide please. So why did people say this? Why do people say, I would like to retreat versus I would like to protect? And one of the primary reasons is safety, right? Do I feel safe? Do I, what am I going to experience if there is a flood? So sixty percent, fifty eight percent of the people said, they feel that the quality of their life behind the barriers will be unacceptable. Thirty two percent of respondents said flood barriers will not affect my Thirty-two percent of respondents said flood barriers will not affect my quality of life. I'm okay with building it. And 10% said flood barriers will be fine. I'm okay with it. I, let's do it, right? Decrease the quality of life, but it's worth doing it to protect my land. Next slide please. So in this report that you, that we have and that, you know, we've did a high level summary tonight. Our recommendations are highlighted and we're going to do a couple of next steps here. But the big picture is this is very expensive, right? It's very disruptive. But FEMA records show that the investment, if you make this investment, right, it's a one to nine return. So for every one dollar that you spend on flood planning, right, doing sea level rise adaptation, you would have spent otherwise nine dollars doing crisis management, emergency services. And this is not something that is not happening to us. We saw Del Monte has already flooded once. It's going to happen again, right? Question is, when are we ready for it? It's just like an earthquake. We know it's coming. The question is, when? We don't know. So we're giving you options in this of how you could potentially plan and move forward. This by all means is this a report that says you, you absolutely could do this. I think this was the very first step, step in a, in a master planning exercise. And so I'm going to let Rebecca talk a little bit about recommended next steps. I think it's very important that you also get some guidance and because there's lots of questions about how do we move forward.
Okay, um, so we've broken out next steps into what you should do now, what you should do in the next four years. And then 2024 and beyond. So right now, we're recommending three things. Is install, purchase and, and install or be ready to install temporary flood protection. I'll talk about that on the next slide. Apply for grants and explore, continue to explore beach nourishment because you don't want to lose any more beach than you need to. As seas rise, you want to try and stay ahead of erosion. Now beach nourishment isn't flood barriers, but it does help you stay ahead of erosion. So I'm going to talk about temporary flood protection on the next slide please. Okay, uh, on the left, a FEMA hundred year storm, on the right, seven, point seven feet or eight inches of sea level rise and the flood path that leads from the beaches into the city. So you can see on the green, the FEMA hundred year storm. The line of Del Monte, where the water crosses Del Monte is about a thousand linear feet. On the right in blue, it's even smaller. But what we recommend is that we confirm those elevations with on the ground surveys. So actually get surveyors out there and make sure that you know exactly where those low points are because once you've identified your low points, you can block those floodwaters. We can do some temporary barriers anytime a storm happens. If the city is ready to go with temporary barriers, you're not going to experience those devastating costly impacts. You're saving your residents and your businesses and yourself a headache. And you can also plan some semi temporary sea level rise protection to buy yourself some time. So next slide. These are just two examples of what are called deployable flood barriers. You know, a big storm is coming. You've gotten your weather updates and you can go out. The one on the left, this is actually filled with water. So it's stored flat and folded up in somebody's basement. You get it out there with a hose. And boom, you've got a temporary flood barrier a thousand feet long protecting your city. And I sent Fernanda some documents so you can explore these options, these deployable options. But highly recommend that the city be prepared for flooding now with something like this ahead of large storms. Next. Right now, start planning with your partners for areas both downtown and outside of downtown. But in area one, start talking to seaside and Caltrans and make sure that you're aligning your planning. Area two, the wharves are planning upgrades. Make sure that you're discussing sea level rise as those upgrades happen. Area three, Coast Guard and Canary Row businesses. What happens in the next 10 years will have big in, what happens at each of those locations in the next year will either cost the city more or cost the city less, depending on whether you're planning now with zoning and code updates and talking about longer term. And really make sure you're talking to your residents as well. Next, please. Uh, I put apply for grants under now, but I'm going to talk about it in terms of what those grants should fund in the next four years. As we went through the transportation options, we realized what the city does doesn't just depend on traffic. It depends on the cost to your public works department to reroute sewer lines and storm drains. It depends on the cost to your businesses to deal with the fact that insurance companies are pulling out of flood risk areas across the country. And are they still going to be able to buy insurance in 10 years? So we are working with, your planning department specifically has just applied for two really large grants with the help of the state coastal conservancy and the California Office of Emergency Services. They helped us apply for two $400,000 FEMA grants to gather all of the information you should need to make a better decision and choose between managed retreat and flood barriers. And within those options specifically, what makes sense? So if those grants get funded this year, you should have that information by 2024 and be ready to make a good decision. And we have just reached out, we have applied for those grants. Fernanda did a tremendous amount of work. And that gives you those four years to talk to the residents and hear what they want to say. Talk to additional funders to find out where more money is coming from to build these improvements. Work with utilities, et cetera. Next slide please. Oh, so these are, these are the agencies we've just been working with on those grants and let's move forward. And then finally in 25, once you've got those questions answered, that's when you identify your preferred alternative and actually start getting the funds and moving forward with everything you need to keep your city safe and keep your city moving. And Frederick's going to wrap up. Next slide.
Thank you. So, so I think what we've shown you here is very disturbing, right? If, if you have a business or a house that's in the area that's going to be flooded, you know, I think you are very scared tonight. I would be as well. Right? So I think it's important that we need to imagine what Monterey could look like and should look like and should start planning for it responsibly. And I think what we're trying to do here is if we do this together, right, we can keep the people and the infrastructure safe. Keep Monterey a great place to come, visit and play and keep it moving as well. Thank you. That's the end of our presentation and we can do questions.
I have a question. Steven Milic. How will the people get to Canary Row with the closing of the tunnel?
So I think what the model showed us there is there's a couple of routes, right? Number one is you're going to go around. So you can go, if Fremont is your, your, your route that you decide to keep. Right? Or what Pearl stays open. So you would have to make your way to downtown and you can take Pacific, get around the lighthouse curve and go to, to Canary Row. The other option is what we see the model does, and I think people do that, is you use Holman Highway, right? So you take highway, open highway, take David Road, go down towards PG, make the right and get to Canary Row there by the, by the aquarium.
What, what by any chance is the, the traffic count, daily traffic count on lighthouse that uses the tunnel? Brad, can you help me with that?
If Andrea cannot show, so it shows, I think currently, Andrea, there you go, yeah.
Yes, 55,000 cars a day on lighthouse curve.
How many?
Fifty-five thousand. That's more than highway one fifty-six and highway one between Monterey and Fremont.
Thank you. Wow.
Any other questions?
I have a few questions. Thanks for your presentation. So the, I was curious, how much was that Caltrans grant? What was the dollar figure of that, of that grant?
It was for a total of $240,000. Two hundred and twelve thousand of those went to the consultants and 27,000 was and change was for me because we had to have, had a match. So my staff time counted toward that.
Okay. Another question is, this is probably totally left field, but I've never seen a tsunami map for Monterey Harbor area. What, Frederick, what, what, you know, with this sort of retreat concept, would there be any relationship between that and tsunami risk?
So I think tsunamis is a, is a whole different study. It's separate from just sea level rise and storms, you know, and I have not seen a tsunami map for Monterey. I don't know, maybe if Kim, if Kim would want to respond to that, maybe Rebecca can as well from her side. But tsunamis is a whole, whole different analogy, methodology.
Thanks Frederick. This is Kim Cole, City of Monterey. Our low point is obviously Del Monte Avenue, Lake Alastero, and that is our tsunami run up area as well. So there are maps, but it, it basically coincides with our flood maps, the 100 year, 500 year. And then you see that exacerbated with sea level rise. So that's the same area that gets hit with a tsunami.
It could be that, 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 you know, if, if in the future, we actually went for these incredible engineering solutions of viaducts, et cetera, that would be another engineering factor in, in any design in that area.
And the most likely source of a tsunami is, if I remember correctly, is the Monterey Canyon. So if there is a significant landslide within that canyon, we're going to have a very short period of time to evacuate. It's not, I was in the EOC during the Japanese, you know, the earthquake in Japan. And we were, as the whole entire emergency operations center for the state of California and Oregon and Washington went into full activation. And it was really interesting to listen as we were getting updates as it was coming close. And they were very close to predicting exactly what the damage was going to be in each harbor. So the, I think the much more significant risk is the potential landslide in the Monterey Canyon.
Okay. So I know that a lot of times when, when you build a structure along the coast like that seawall they built in front of those townhouses down on Del Monte Beach, it, it causes erosion on adjacent beaches. And I guess that would be a whole EIR issue. If, you know, any seawalls that are built, they have to anticipate what, how that affects all the other beaches in the area.
And there's two significant impacts. There's the scouring at the base of the seawall and there's increased erosion on either side. And I'm sure Rebecca can explain that in much more detail than me.
Okay.
You just nailed it actually, Kim. You, you've got it exactly right. The, both seawall designs that you saw had what's called riprap or boulders placed at the base of them on the ocean side. And that's a scouring protection barrier. And there's other other barriers within the design of the seawall that help deal with the base or the erosion under the seawall. You don't want it to get eroded from underneath. What you're talking about, I believe, is away from the seawall. If I have a seawall in this section of the coast, there's more erosion here and there's more erosion here. And that absolutely does need to be taken into account any kind of levee or seawall design. That have been transport study to show how the coastal currents will, will impact that erosion and with it in mind.
Thank you. Just a few more.
You know, I'd like to add one more thing to that, just to answer your question, Terry. I think the impacts to the Monterey Bay, we haven't really looked at significantly enough for the seawall alternative. And I'm thinking about what is going to happen to our boating community and our wharf that's adjacent. You know, if the scouring increases and the wave action is much more significant and sort of slams against that wall and then, you know, recedes back, how is that going to affect the, the entire harbor? And that's something that if the city's serious about going forward with a seawall, we would eventually need to hire some coastal scientists to be able to more accurately describe to us those environmental impacts. So we could understand that as well.
Well, also with, with any PIRs or coastal permits, you know, there, there probably would be a coastal commission preference for retreat rather than seawalls, I would think.
There's, yes, they've adopted substantial guidance encouraging retreat.
Yeah. So just a few more, the, the lighthouse tunnel, one of the appendices included, obviously this whole viaduct thing would also have to go above the tunnel in some fashion. And so the, I, I was wondering that this $300 million, I, I realize this is so preliminary, but still that, that viaduct $300 million estimate, did that include the portion that would go over the tunnel?
And it's only two lanes, Terry.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, it does. It does. So, so about a hundred million of, of that cost is, is primarily for the, the bridge itself, right? The viaduct itself. Another hundred million is for, you know, your, your utilities because all your major utilities run along Del Monte. And the, the rest of it, it's all for contingencies and unknowns and environmental clearance and it's just, you know, and, and design and there's just a bunch of stuff that goes with it otherwise. So we call it a soft cost.
And finally, the Coast Guard pier, isn't, who owns the Coast Guard pier?
The Coast Guard?
Yeah, it's owned by the federal government. So, and is a federal facility.
Right. So, so they're actually, you know, we would obviously have to work with them. Because it appears as though that's a little low point right next to the pier that has to be engineered in some fashion. But, so that, that, that's, that, they own that pier.
They do. And they, and so we actually already contacted the Army Corps of Engineers and with our harbor master, we had a preliminary meeting talking about that facility and the potential and the need to increase its height over time. And there appear to be some opportunities to work with Army Corps because that is their facility, a federal facility for, you know, the, the engineers and the significant scientists to look at that structure in the long term.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Any other questions? I have a couple. Go ahead, Mike.
How does, how does the, 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 the stopping, the, the sandbagging of the, of the sand mine up in Marina affect us, the sand flow down the beach and, and, and of course into the harbor? Because you just know that's going to happen. And, and what about King Tides? I don't know that we've had a, we've had a flooding incident from King Tides, but I think there's one, there's some King Tides coming in, 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 in next week, is it? Thirteenth, fifteenth, something like that? And so that would be really interesting to observe how high that water comes. And if, and if, if it ever comes with, with the kind of waves that we've had for the last couple of days, it might be, might be really exciting to watch and be, and get wet feet.
I think one of the most interesting places, Fernanda and I were talking about this. The last time we went down to observe the King Tides a couple of years ago, if you went to Del Monte Beach, the active wave action was undercutting the Cypress trees on Del Monte Avenue. So that's, you know, just right at the back of the dunes. And then what happened, which was really, it, it took me a while to figure it out. I couldn't figure out why our trash can from the recreation trail was in the middle of the volleyball court. And so the pedestrian access points along Del Monte Beach, where there's a slight depression in the height, if you will, of that where there's a slight depression in the height, if you will, of that very small sand area, is where water was already cutting through there and then flooding the rectrail. And that's how the trash can got moved from the recreation trail to the middle of the volley volleyball court. So if you want to go and look, actually, I think Fernanda and I are planning to go down there and try to take some photographs on the 14th, 15th, and 16th, just to see what it looks like. But look at Del Monte Avenue, and I think you can see how close it is, or Del Monte Beach.
In San Francisco, there's a region-wide, a bay-wide, King Tide sort of science project where
Festival? You mean a festival?
There's a group of citizens who are interested in sea level rise, who go out and take photos of the King Tides, and they're beginning to use drones. So if, if any of you have, have friends who are interested in buying some drones, it's a much safer way of getting some really great views of where that water's coming to.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. When do you propose to start the managed retreat and who will pay for it?
Such a great question. So the state, as a matter of fact, the feds as well, are really encouraging the identification of triggers and thresholds. So a trigger is a specific event that allows something or forces something to happen. So a trigger could be, hey, you've just gotten $300 million in grants, let's use it. It could also be, you just had a devastating flood and you have to recover, so let's make sure as we build back, we do it carefully. A threshold is the slower turning up the volume. And that's, we need to do X by the time the sea reaches Y. So as part of the grants that Fernanda just applied for would be benefit cost analyses for both of these, but also identification of the triggers and the thresholds that would be needed to answer your question.
The other thing, I wanted to just make a comment. I did not realize that transit buses cost a million dollars apiece. That's a little hard, that's a little hard buy.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the new electric buses. That's what they go for. And I think that's where, where transit is heading to.
Okay, no diesel.
No diesel.
Any other questions? Sandy?
No, thank you.
The commission questions.
I just have one. I was the guy at, at our last meeting that said that I would really prefer to see triggers set up before, before we start spending money because once you have a, a solid trigger, you know when you got to start, you know, panicking. Because, you know, some of the, some of the, the graphics that, that you showed, you know, early on here showed that there was a, so it, it looked like the, the, the reaction to the, to the high water was a lot of car accidents and, and a full ER. And I thought, what? How could that be? It just doesn't, it doesn't flow. Because this, this, this is going to be a slow motion train wreck. It's not going to happen real quickly.
That's, I think that's a great comment, right? But, but I think the, the lessons learned is that we are extremely safe. We never drive in the running water. We never go outside. If people say leave our house, we do it immediately, right? And we know there's, there's a portion of the public that will never, ever do that, and they are the ones that need to be rescued.
Dan, do you have any questions? Steve? Thank you. Steve?
I don't have any questions, but when we get into the public comments, I noticed we have 11 items on, in the chat room.
Okay, yeah. Hudson?
No comments at this time or questions.
I have a, thank you. I have a couple. In the retreat up into the sanctuary, I see the point of land that is now the cemetery. Is there any discussion on armoring some of that to keep so, erosion from going into that sanctuary?
Those, those details have not been worked out at this level of planning. But yes, the, the retreat plan would require after a full elevation survey, it would require understanding, okay, where do we still need some protection? And what that protection is would also depend on, my understanding is that Lake Alastero was originally a coastal estuary in a marsh. It's a highly vegetated marsh that requires a, a different, allows for different wave action and requires difference along strengthening than if, if it's a recreational harbor that's allowed to be a little deeper and have some waves. The current retreat plan is not dredging and letting large boats in, but it would be, you know, kayaks and, and other small craft. Or it could be just marshland, and those would all for different answers.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. I think my concern is, if you've ever seen cemeteries that have been eroded, it causes all kinds of problems. And we just need to make sure that's part of the plan. The, the other section we haven't discussed so far is I saw a lot of lines along Canary Row, yellow lines and so forth, indicating concerns. What is the plan to, if we draw back, what are we going to do with Canary Row?
So Canary Row is not directly threatened by the current sea level rise projections. It's well above the projected area. It's threatened by the combination of sea level rise and
wave action.
Both of them happen on top of each other, the waves in Canary Row as localized flooding. It appears from the level of engineering that we've done so far, which is preliminary, that very minimal seawalls at road level won't be appropriate to protect the roadway. What's more concerned, and this was not our work, predecessors' work, in the Moffitt study that was published last year, is the impact of those large waves on the existing physical building. So such pieces of wooden buildings and the peas, the waves can come up underneath and pound under the peers. Those are, those are more in the road itself.
And you could still have erosion from underneath? That would affect the roadway?
Our plan suggests that the city explore the option of offshore wave attenuation structures. So these additional boulders, underwater reefs, various things to reduce wave action offshore there would help with that erosion potential, even if it's not necessary to prevent flooding at that level.
The other thing we should add from the Moffitt and Nichol that it's important to remember that geology of our bay is very different. We've got the sandy beaches, which are very subject to erosion, but we have the granite cliffs, if you will, of Canary Row. So the granite is not expected to necessarily erode. We do have some pocket beaches that we're going to lose. But it's the big waves, and we already, we've seen them during major storms. If you're a local, you know, you go down to El Torito, you eat during a major storm, so you can see the water hit the window. I mean, it's, it's part of the experience. So we do see big waves already in Canary Row affecting certain existing businesses.
Well, and if you ever walk underneath those canneries, you will also see there's quite a bit of space. So when your, the carpet gets wet in El Torito, you understand how much wave action there is. One of the things that I see here is that, and you, you talked about it, I appreciate it in your presentation, but has there, Kim, has there been any multi-agency coordination on an agreement for those contiguous agencies affecting this end of the bay? It wouldn't do us any good to put all this in place and then the, the wave action come around behind us from one side to the other.
So we have not done a multi-agency coordination with sea level rise right now to protect that, or to move forward any of these adaptation options. But that's something that we should definitely do.
I appreciate that because if you look at the major rivers, that's what frequently happens. Because one agency does a great job, if the agencies on the joining sides don't do the same quality work and we end up, the water coming in from the side. I just, I just ask, that's, I think that's part of the planning. One of the issues, yeah. When I look at what we've been doing the last couple of years, and now I see the impact that this is going to have on some of those locations. I think that we need to identify an area now that we raise an extra concern when it comes to a planning process. If someone comes in with an application for to do something major at, or hypothetically, a McDonald's site, is that a good, is this a good time to consider a major development there? Because it, it just raises a concern that we need to bring these issues up to whoever's planning a process that you're begging trouble. And we don't want to put something in there now that we're just going to have to maybe pay more for when it comes time to remove it. So I just suggest that we look at that in. And I was, I listened to the presentation about a roadway isn't just a roadway. It's a trafficway for water, power, sewer, et cetera. And, yeah. And if we adding to it by new construction or improving construction, we're just, I just think borrowing trouble. But aside from that, anybody else have any questions before we open it for public comment?
I just want to add that you've all had really good comments. Your right chair that we need to look at changing our zoning codes or building codes to to anticipate development that might want to locate in the flood zone. And will we allow that? And that's one of the things that FEMA loves to fund. Zoning code, building code updates for flood-prone areas. So that's definitely in our radar. But unfortunately, this grant was only funding transportation-related adaptation strategies. So we
I appreciate Fernanda.
Yeah.
And then there's little things like how do you move a train out of a flood area? We have one that that is the menace, and that's going to be a major problem. We don't want it to turn into a rust bucket. So anyway, any other questions before we open up public comment? I guess I do have one more that this is all leading towards. Is when you look at those retreat maps and sort of the aerial photographs, you see there quite a few private properties that would be affected. And, you know, there, there's all this stuff that wasn't included in a transportation study because that's not what they're dealing with. But this was an excellent start to the whole thing because it's, it turns out the transportation is sort of the, definitely one of the keys of the whole problem. And so, you know, I, I, I guess the question for Kim is, you know, all these studies that we're going to have to start doing now are like, you know, we're going to be looking for, to changing our LCP. And we're going to be changing our zoning ordinance, and we're going to be going for all these grants and, and FEMA money. And it's, it's a, it sounds like there is some urgency to to what, what the recommendations that came out of this transportation study.
Well, I, I think it's important to remember our flood zones have been our flood zones for a really long time. And the 105-year, 100-year flood zones are, have been well identified for decades. And this just puts an increased urgency on those issues. And so I think it's, you know, it's our marching orders for the next four years and then beyond to, to work on this. I mean, this is not going to be funded if we true, if we choose as a community retreat. You know, $100 million is significant financial investment. And so, you know, this is our, these will be our planning efforts for the next decades coming up.
And I, like, as an example of, of the planning process, I believe that we have, the city has some plans to either buy new ones or improve the pumps at Alastero that go across Del Monte. And I, I don't know if that would be cost-effective right now, but that's just what I'm talking about, that we need to look at all aspects in what's going, and I'm sure you are, Kim. I, I'm not saying that. So if we can, let's open up for public comments, Sarah.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. I just want to do a quick announcement and friendly reminder to the public regarding the process for public comments. Just a friendly reminder that you can join the meeting on Zoom directly, and that link is available at iserchmonterey.org under the recent tab. You can also join by telephone by dialing the numbers listed on the screen. And the webinar ID is 161-990-0839. To make a public, please, public comment, please simply raise your hand using the Zoom function. Or if you're connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute yourself. And please note that if you are near a device like a TV or your computer speakers, please step away or go into another room when speaking, so there's no disruption or interference with the broadcast. And I will call on each speaker in order of hands raised. The chair has also designated a three-minute time limit for the meeting today. So we would ask that you please stay within your time limit, and we will have a countdown timer shown on the screen. And one thing I did want to mention, I know Commissioner Milich mentioned this, and you may have seen this in the meeting, is that we did get quite a few comments in the Q and A section and the chat function. So I'm going to go ahead and first start with the attendees that are raising their hands, and they can share their public comment. And then I was thinking, if it's okay with you, Chair, I would go through and read the comments and the Q and A and see if we could get those questions heard and answered.
Good idea.
Perfect. So I'm going to start off with my first caller. So Lee, I just went ahead and allowed you to speak and share your public comment. If you could please unmute yourself.
My, my, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. A couple of questions. The Coastal Commission has not been mentioned here. For the wall off option, will the Coastal Commission allow that kind of wall structures? My second question is, being a homeowner on the La Playa complex, there are townhomes, townhomes right on the beach, would the city consider in allowing us to, to armor the, the beach there so that we can protect our homes?
It's already been armored.
Those are my questions.
Thank you, Lee.
Do we have an answer for those questions? I believe that we, we already mentioned the Coastal Commission has approved this retreat practice. As a suggestion.
In other words, they're not, they're not again, as, as a coastal homeowner, I'm concerned about walling off. Has, has that option been considered? And if so, would the Coastal Commission even consider something like that?
I'll just say, I don't think we can answer for the Coastal Commission.
I, I agree. So building a seawall in front of the La Playa homes was not an option that we considered. This, again, was a transportation-focused project. Protecting the rectrail with a seawall was an option, but building a seawall on the other side was not. But I don't want to say that that's not something we want to consider. We can always start a working group with the La Playa homeowners to discuss that possibility. And again, that's something that would be a very long planning process that will eventually involve the Coastal Commission.
Chair?
Yeah.
I, I suggest that, that we're going to get a lot of questions on this. My recommendation is staff write down the questions and that we can get through everybody through the
That's a good idea.
process, and then we can come back and answer all the questions and respond to everybody. But it's going to take a long time to have a Q and A back.
I agree. If we could, let's move on, Sarah. If we could, let's move on, Sarah.
Sure. Let me go ahead and move on to our next public commenter. So Dan, I'm gonna allow you to speak and share your comments. And I just unmuted you.
Okay, hi. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, cool. I did it right. Uh, first of all, hey, Mike Dawson, nice to see you again.
Hi, Dan.
Uh, I think that Terry. Hit everything that was really on the back of my mind and that, and that is. That what are the unintended consequences? If you wall everything up, put those barriers down there. I remember years ago. That a professor at the Navy Postgraduate School. Said that there are a lot of unintended consequences when you start doing that. And we don't know from tonight's presentation. What the unintended consequences are. And I think you guys need to look into that before you make up your minds. And secondly, is the fact that, uh, you know, I come from, uh. A science family and, and, um, we talk about a lot of things and look at a lot of different ways of, of doing things. And we, we've heard this for all our lives and that is don't mess with mother nature. So probably the best way to do it is the least. Uh, evasive procedure that you have, the better. And that's it. And only a minute and 30 seconds to go.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And let me just move along to the next person here. Um, so our next, um, caller, I, it is calling in from a phone. And the last three digits are two zero four. And I just, um, went ahead and allowed you to speak. If you could please unmute by pressing star six. And that was called, I needed two zero four.
Uh, good evening, Tom Raleigh, uh, calling in, um. As an oceanographic engineering graduate of NPS, I think I know the professor that, uh. Uh, the individual before me was talking about. A couple of things come to mind. Uh. Um, I know Frederick Fenter is well familiar, international traveler. With, uh, countries and the first thing that calls to mind when you look at considering a seawalls or barriers of any kind. Is the idea of, um. The Netherlands or Holland where, uh, they've been battling this for centuries. And most of the country is, uh, you know, a low, low level and been, been reclaimed. And, you know, I would like to make sure that we get the best consultants possible to do whatever we do successfully. So I'm saying that maybe we need to go, um, talk to Frederick and, uh, Kim, Kim Lee Horn and see who they could recommend. For perhaps some international consulting help. The other is I recently saw a documentary on Charleston, South Carolina. And, um, if you've ever had friends or visited people, which I have old Navy shipmates. That live a couple of blocks from the harbor. And there's a seawall protecting their whole neighborhood. And they are particularly having problems now with, because of the same, same problems we face here. With sea level rise and, and the issue that all the, all the unintended consequences. When you try to fix something one way and it causes problems in another way. And if I recall properly, the, the problem with flooding Del Monte Avenue has happened once before. When a part of the Naval Postgraduate School got flooded. The pumps from the Del Monte Lake at the postgraduate school failed. And I believe, I don't know if it was 1987, but I recall in my time since I moved back here in 1981. That the pumps failed and that causes, caused the flooding on Del Monte. But I, I can't verify that and perhaps Kim has already researched that. So I would recommend, um, if there's somebody, um, that can pursue. Uh, getting expertise beyond just what we know in California. And, um, again, we have unique problems in Monterey. And again, uh, this is an issue that the, uh. Sanctuary Advisory Council has discussed and will be possibly discussing on our work plan for 2021. I know it's one of the ones, one of the issues that I submitted. So there are other people working on this problem. And of course, the sanctuary, which is the largest sanctuary we have. And it's, you know, uh, stretches from San Luis Obispo all the way up to the Golden Gate. So hopefully we can get some ideas to add to the mix. And I'm suggesting we need to not, not leave any stone unturned in getting expertise advice on, on this problem. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you for your comment. And we have a few more comments coming up. Uh, next up I have, uh, Christopher Barlow. I'm gonna go ahead and allow you to speak and please unmute.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Uh, hopefully everybody can hear me.
Yep.
Great. Okay, well, uh, I'm Christopher Barlow, uh, resident in Monterey and also the owner of Monterey. It's thankfully not in the flood zone. Uh, I wanted to thank Fernanda, Frederick and Rebecca for, uh, a great job on that presentation. Uh, and to mention that a historic side note is that the tunnel itself that's, uh. That connects to, uh, Silver Grove. Is already a victim of sea level without sea level rise. It was built a couple of feet too low. And it's got pumps running 24/7, which does not really do any, anything for our carbon footprint. Um, in terms of reducing it. So, uh, I think that tunnel unfortunately is something that we're gonna have to. Learn to live without it someday. Um, and, uh, also wanted to mention, uh. On the, uh, survey of, of folks, uh, that were consulted of, um, different responses, uh, it. We have residents and agencies listed as stakeholders, but there's not a, any mention of the business community. Um, aside from the condominiums and their residences, um. There's, most of those properties that are gonna be affected are businesses. And I think it would be a good idea to get them involved now. Um, similar to the wild fire risk reduction that we mentioned earlier this afternoon. Uh, this problem is just too big for government to solve by itself. You really need some, some private, uh, partnerships, uh, being developed to. For the properties that are potentially part of the solution to help that. You know, we, we mentioned before, I've got a client who's located the, sort of the tip of the spear right at Del Monte and Slope. That's offered to give up a portion of zone land to facilitate a left turn land, lane from, uh, Del Monte to Slope. That we might really need now, um, given the, the. Urgency of the situation and the need to reroute traffic. Um, so I think this is a, uh, important opportunity for us all as citizens of Monterey and, uh, and. And just to work together and, and try to come up with a, a solution that'll, that'll save everything we value. Our, our, our businesses, our coastline. Um, our, and our quality of life. So again, thanks very much and, uh, very informative presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And next I have Kurt. I'm gonna go ahead and allow Kurt to unmute, please. And Kurt, you can unmute whenever you're ready. See. And Kurt, it does look like you're unmuted. Oh, you just, there we go. It appears that you were speaking. We just couldn't hear you. And Kurt, it looks like you're still, oh, you just unmuted right now. So you should be able to.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, so, um. As a homeowner here in downtown Monterey. And based on the data, the modeling data that's been shown in this presentation. We've told our son that he's gonna inherit a wonderful beach prop, beachfront property. But I, I do have some concerns and when I hear the word seawall and pumps. New Orleans, that's the first thing that comes into my mind and what happened there. I also heard that the seawall that's being designed is a hundred year for a hundred year flood. Given the history and what's happening in our environment today. We should be doing a 500-year flood, which will probably turn into a 50-year flood. Because it's happening more often. So that adds costs. In the managed retreat, one area I have great concern is. The new overlay, downtown overlay. And you are actually putting high density housing. Right in the flood area. And that's gonna add huge costs. Huge costs to the retreat. I'm glad to hear that the Chair said that you need to go back and relook at this. Because you're adding cost and, and. To our future generations. So again, we look at the downtown overlay area. And then the other area that I, again, I want to reemphasize, I think retreat is the best way to go. Because building seawalls. As somebody else mentioned, the unintended consequences that would happen. Is catastrophic. And it's been mentioned several times. I've been reading the Coastal Commission's, uh. Data and their reports and they are very adamant that retreat would be the best method. Rather than doing any type of hard, uh, barrier. So that was all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And next up I have Morgan. Uh, Morgan, I just unmuted or I allowed you to speak. If you could unmute to share your public comment.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, my name is Morgan Ivans Duran and I'm a Monterey resident in the Glenwood neighborhood. And I wanted to say thank you, um, to the Planning Commission for the opportunity to speak today and for the detailed presentation we received earlier this evening. Um, and I also appreciate the questions and comments from, um, the planning members and the other, um, public members on the call so. Far today. Like several of the earlier comments, I wanted to strongly support the implementation of adaptation measures. And managed retreat rather than erecting seawalls or other types of hard infrastructure to deal with rising sea level. Or and other climate impacts. The draft report shows that the adaptation measures will be a more durable investment with lower overall costs in the long term. Furthermore, through these adaptation measures, we have an opportunity to preserve our coastal views. Enhance habitat and improve the overall quality of life, which makes Monterey such an attractive place to live and visit. Of the specific options, um, related to traffic outlined in the draft report. I think that the Del Monte Viaduct merits continued consideration. I do not support the Del Monte realignment, given that it's going to entail additional impacts to the Oak Grove neighborhood. Above and beyond those they will experience from the shoreline encroachment. I also have some concerns about expanding use of Fremont. Um, it's already a heavily used road, particularly during peak traffic times. And I have concerns that making it the only route into downtown may further exacerbate existing congestion issues. It would be really useful to see some more detailed projections and feasibility assessments. Of how likely it is we could move a substantial portion of those trips into mass transit or, um, bicycle commuting. And on that note, um, I wanted to close by saying I appreciated several references within the draft report to preserving. And expanding pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure as part of this. Adaptation plan. As a bike commuter myself, I strongly encourage the planning commission to. Consider how to maintain, if not improve, the bikeability of Monterey as part of this large investment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. And I have one more, a couple more hands raised here. Uh, Trey, I just went ahead and allowed you to speak. If you could please unmute.
Hi, yes. Good evening. I have a question about the Highway One Echotone Levy. I'm just wondering what that is, what it entails. If there's been talks about who will be funding that and who's responsible. Is it the. State or is it, uh, local cities? And how effective is an Echotone Levy?
Thank you. We'll add that to the questions.
Thank you. And next I have Ken and Ken, I just allowed you to speak. If you could please unmute.
Thank you so very much. Longtime resident of the area, former newspaper reporter. I want to commend the city. For being so, uh, far sighted and looking at this problem well in advance of the need to come to a solution. Um, I also want to commend you on an excellent choice of consultant. Um, having looked at a lot of reports prepared for a lot of government agencies over the course of many years. This is one of the clearest and most concise in easily accessible language. Uh, the visuals are stunning and I think it really will help people make a good decision moving forward. Uh, I put a couple of comments in the chat that I won't go over again here. Um, but I will say, while this report deals with some particular transportation. Area issues around Del Monte and getting into downtown Monterey and through downtown Monterey. Uh, the impacts on Monterey's transportation will have a huge effect. On movement throughout the peninsula into New Monterey, into Pacific Grove. Um, those problems have existed for a long time. Uh, and were exacerbated, um, with the closure of the through roads in the Presidio in August of 2001. So I hope that as you're looking at the, the coastal projects around. Del Monte and window on the bay. That you'll also be having conversations with other agencies. For a, a peninsula regional solution to what is a peninsula regional traffic problem. And, uh, thank you for getting well ahead of it.
Thank you for your comments. And next we have, uh, Lawrence. Lawrence, I just went ahead and allowed you to speak. If you could please unmute.
Yeah, thank you. Um, my name is Lawrence Garber. I'm a graduate student here in Monterey at the Middlebury Institute. Studying environmental policy and I've been closely studying the coastal act for the past through a couple of months. And I just wanted to echo the, the, um, the sentiment of the last caller to commend the city. Um, on putting this study together, um, as this is one of the first, um, serious looks at, um. At managed retreat that I've seen in, in the past couple of months of my study of the coast. Um, so I'm proud that it's happening, you know, here in Monterey and I just wanna, um. Put my, uh, support behind these efforts and that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And our next, uh, public comment is Mark and Mark, I just allowed you to speak. So you can go ahead and unmute when you're ready.
Hey, Sarah, thank you for that. Um, I've got a question for Rebecca. She mentioned in her comments right at the end. Uh, about immediate suggestions of things we could do immediately. And one of them was, um, to work on beach nourishment. Um, I'm also a, a La Playa resident and we've worked a lot on trying to figure out good ways to get beach. Nourishment done. And of course, you know, you've gotta, you've gotta coordinate the Coastal Commission, the, the, um. Marine Sanctuary and, you know, a lot of different folks. And I'm wondering if maybe she has an idea since she brought that up on how to. More easily facilitate that because. Not an easy process to get people to allow you to put your, uh, sand on the beach. You can't just dump it out of a truck. So. Maybe she has some ideas on a way to facilitate that more effectively.
Thank you. Cut it written down.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
And let's see, it looks like we have. Everyone whose hands are raised. And just a friendly reminder, if you do want to raise your hand to share a public comment. You can raise your hand in the Zoom function or you can dial star nine on your phone if you'd like to share a comment at this time. And it looks like we don't have any, um, additional hands raised, Chair. Um, and I'm just going through, we do have quite a few questions and comments in the, uh, Q and A option. And I'm just going through, we do have quite a few questions and comments in the Q and A option. Would you like us just to add those to the question list that we're compiling as staff?
If you would.
Sure thing, we can do that.
I have already copied and pasted them, the ones that have been typed, not the ones that have been verbally asked in the comment. Of course, I did that with the minutes. Sorry, where did that wrong? But yeah, I do have a list and we will save this and go back to it later. And I imagine we'll see it in a future planning packet.
Thank you, ladies. Any other public comment before I bring you back?
Sure. It doesn't look like we have any additional public comment other than what was in the Q and A. Just a friendly reminder, if any other members of the public would like to share a comment, now is the time, and please either raise your hand or dial star nine if you are calling in.
Thank you, Sarah.
Doesn't look like we have any other hands raised, Chair.
Appreciate it. First of all, I want to thank everybody for calling in and participating. Public input is important to us. Having said that, I would like to bring it back to the commission for comments and any other questions.
I have, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Dan.
Here we are knocking on our front doors, sea level rise and all the problems that come along with it. And the work that's been done so far is impressive, but what it's pointed out to me is just how much more work needs to be done to really nail down what our options are, solutions and particular costs. And I really would encourage staff to continue to pursue funding to take this to the next level, the detailed survey work that needs to be done, the form of basis for all the other studies that we're going to have to do with this. But so far, we have a big, big problem here, and I think we just need to keep chipping away at this and really honing in on what our options are. That's it.
Thanks.
My only comment, I kind of want to piggyback on Dan's comment, is that, I mean, this is not going to be an issue till it's an issue, right? So it's always going to be out of sight, out of mind until it's an issue. And so we need to make sure that we actually know that we know what's happening, that we diligently work forward to putting the fixes in place and spend the time and energy. And if we can get grants to pay for a lot of the groundwork, that's great. But it's, you know, it's not until we have an event that all of a sudden it's a crisis, we have to plan for the event even though it's not there, knowing that it's going to be there. And that's, that's the hard thing is is making sure we all agree that this is what we're going to do because we know it's coming and not get sidetracked to something else because doesn't that we can, this is coming down the road, we don't need to do this right now. So it needs to be something that is always on the forefront of our mind. You know, if we were not on the coast, we wouldn't care how much. But we are definitely, we have a very, very long coastline here and will definitely be impacted. You know, our industry, our major industry is tourism. We need to make sure we get people here. We need to make sure that we can move people around here. And then we also need to make sure that our citizens have a great place to live. So those are my only comments.
Thanks, Hudson. Can you hear that? Mike? Sandy?
I want to piggyback on Dan's comment by saying that if Del Monte Beach or El Estero Lake is the low point, and it requires a viaduct, it does benefit the entire peninsula by having it there. So participation among the communities, to me, would be very important because people need to get not just through Monterey, but from one city to another.
So I agree with the several people who complimented Rebecca and Frederick on their report. It was really, really well done, great graphics. And I like the way they put this sort of dramatic situation into simple options. Of course, they're, of course, they're too simple. But you got to start somewhere, and this is a really good start. There was another study the city did in 2016 that was included in our packet, and I read that. And so it's something we are working on. And but if the 2030, you know, eight inch rise is anywhere near accurate, and eight inches causes that much havoc, we're very smart to really start spending money on this and trying to get as much grants and movement as we can, and certainly all the surveys and everything. I was in New York, in New Orleans a couple of years ago, and I actually rode bikes all around the town, went down into the Ninth Ward, Lower Ninth, as they call it. And when you're in the Lower Ninth, New Orleans, you're looking up at the seawall that's like 30 feet above you, and that's the Mississippi River behind it. And of course, it failed really catastrophically. And so I can't help but reach the conclusion from this presentation that really, you know, the seawalls are something we can use in places. But as a whole solution to this, this, you know, over mile long section of the city, it definitely is, is going to be problematic. So it seems like a retreat solution is, is the smarter solution we're going to go in. But boy, it's going to have impacts on a lot of properties, and it's, it's really going to be such a huge financial impact on this whole part of the city around Lake El Estero and that sort of east of downtown area. So and then finally, the, you know, we're, we had a application come through just last month or the month before down on Del Monte and some pretty ambitious projects down there. And it does, you know, this, this, tonight's report makes us, it obvious to me at least, that our LCP and our zoning ordinance is going to take some, we're going to have to anticipate future coastal flooding in our, our land use documents. So thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Anybody else?
Yeah, I do. I like the report. I think it's very well done. It's understandable. I, my concerns are we should have as short a viaduct as possible. I think one over Pearl, to me, is favorable over the others. The only problem I have with even a short viaduct is that this is a transportation study. Do you really think a two lane viaduct is viable? I mean, think about that. The traffic problems we have now with four lanes on Del Monte, and we're going to put that onto Fremont and onto the viaduct in two lanes. If we have a larger viaduct, what happens if there's an accident? I mean, how do you get the, how do you get the people to the hospital? How do you get the emergency vehicles in? I know you make it wider, but my point is we already have a horrible transportation problem through New Monterey up to Slope. And turning that four lanes into two lanes, what is that going to do to the existing problem? And I don't think shutting it off onto Fremont is really quite viable, to be honest with you. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I have a couple of comments. We haven't heard of too much, and since this is about transportation. In my mind, if we have the 55,000 on Lighthouse, and we have them going through the tunnel, and if that's going to be gone, then we need to open up another route, and that would mean in making Highway 68, Homewood Highway, four lanes instead of two. So we need to look at that, and that's, once again, going to be one of those partners with Caltrans and the other impact. What I see here is that we're going to be changing the neighborhoods and changing this area. Getting to them, getting around them is going to be the issue. But if you look over the levees along the highways going up into Sacramento, you'll see even the height of our buildings will have to change because they put every house on stilts so the water can run under them. When you have these levy breaks and surges, so this makes a full plate for staff. And I really appreciate the presentation, and everybody said like the graphics, it really brings it home. But our staff also, I compliment them for bringing this issue to us. Because it just gave us a whole big platter of issues that need to be addressed. So Kim, do you have any closing comments? On this issue?
So I'm happy to talk just briefly about next steps, and maybe Fernanda does as well. There were just a couple of comments from the public I want to answer before next steps because I think they're important because they're so Tom Rowley asked, did the pumps fail? They did. They failed, I believe, actually, the date on that photograph is wrong. It was somewhere between 1995 and 1997 that that flooding on Del Monte Avenue occurred. The other major question I heard was from Mark Keller about beach nourishment, and I wanted to let Mr. McKeller know, there's actually an environmental document that our city council has certified for beach nourishment. And it follows up on the Southern Monterey Bay Coastal Erosion Work Group for about eight years of research from coastal scientists. So that is a document that's fully certified and gives us the all of the protocols to screen sand and potentially put it on our beaches. The next step would be to refine those locations more and actually come up with a project and work with our resource agencies and on obtaining permits. So I did want to let him know that beach nourishment, there's been a lot of work done. And then Rebecca, I couldn't answer what an Echotone levy is and the funding and how effective is that type of levy? So maybe you can just briefly answer that question.
Yeah, um, thank you, Kim. An Echotone levy, if you've got access to the president described on Y31. But basically, a typical levy is is a sloped earth and a large mound of earth that holds back the water. An Echotone levy is where you make a more gentle slope on the water side. Oh, thank you. That's helpful. You make a more gentle slope on the water side of that, and you plant it with naturally occurring plants to give it ecologic benefits. So the photograph on this slide in the bottom right corner is a natural dome, but an Echotone levy would be made to mimic the appearance of a natural dome and to mimic the ecological and recreational benefits of that dome. If it's going to be used for flood protection, it is engineered to standards that would meet flood protection requirements, whether that's a hundred year coastal storm or a 500 year coastal storm. It would be engineered for seismic safety. We live in California. But essentially, it would look more like a natural environment than a typical standard levy.
Great. Thank you, Rebecca. And I think from there, that answers the majority of questions that I heard this evening. Fernanda, do you want to wrap it up about the next steps and where we see the study going next?
Sure. As Rebecca mentioned, we did apply for a FEMA grant. And this is exactly the type of work that FEMA is interested in funding. In order to actually get FEMA funding to construct any adaptation improvements, you need to show that you've done a cost benefit analysis. So that's what we're looking for. We're looking for funding to do this cost benefit analysis, which will involve a very robust public outreach effort because we have to be able to figure out all these properties that we might let go. How much is that going to cost us? What are the market values, et cetera? So we know that that's something we need to consider in order to be able to be eligible for future construction funding. And then also, as Rebecca mentioned, looking at our land use documents, our zoning code, our building code, to figure out where should we allow future development to locate? And should we be updating our LCP with, with some of this information? So those are things that we want to do under this grant that we applied for. Unfortunately, we rely on this, on grant money to do all this work. And that's very tough. Also, I hear the public when they say we need to look at, this is a regional problem, and therefore we need regional partners. That also takes a lot of outreach and staff time and dollars, but is very valuable. So that's also, that would also be included if we receive that grant. So we, yeah, we are pursuing grants, and we're not going to let this go. But thank you for letting us present and for all the public comments.
And just so the public's aware, we're hoping to bring this forward to the city council in early February as a study and share a very similar presentation to them and accept public comment.
Thanks, Kim. Anybody else have a comment before I close that part? Okay. I think the last thing on, go ahead, Steve.
The council, of course, may want to consider, or may not, want to consider a moratorium on development in certain areas while they study this issue.
That's what I wrote down in the emergency ordinance. Cover that. Thank you. I think, Kim, we have, let's see, planning notes for upcoming events?
I have nothing really to add to the written report. Just one quick highlight. The city council did pass the first reading of the cannabis ordinance that you passed forward to them at the last meeting. So they're moving forward, and our city manager, Honze Uslar, presented to the city council a public outreach roadmap for cannabis that we're going to be looking at all of the various types of regulatory framework for cannabis in 2021. So I just want to let you know your recommendations going forward into law. And we will not have a meeting on December 22. I hope everybody has a nice holiday. But we will hit the ground running in January of 2021 with ADUs and circulation elements and vehicle miles traveled discussion. So looking forward to a restful holiday, and I hope you all have that as well. And then come back rested. You're going to need it.
Okay, any closing commissioner comments? Deffning silent. I have one. This may be my last meeting as chair, and I wanted to thank the commission for keeping me on my toes and staff in particular for keeping me on my toes. This is a great group.
This is not your end. You started in July. I just double checked that.
Well, I think Kim and I had this conversation recently, and I think it's going to go in December, this December. So anyway, if it is, thank you all. And I appreciate all the work that this commission does. And I, your support in keeping me in line. And any other comments? I would like to close this meeting. Thank you very much. Meeting is closed. Thank you very much. Meeting is closed.